Good evening. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council, July 6, 2022. Michelle, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Cuttrano.
Present.
And Mayor Hellman.
I am here, thank you. And may I get a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting?
Before we do that, I need to make a correction to one of the consent items.
Okay, please.
Item number 14. So, the first part of it is correct. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance, amending town code Title 17. And it continues on, but there is a second ordinance, and it incorrectly says "and introduce an ordinance," and it's "and adopt an ordinance," because that's second reading.
So after the semicolon, after the word districts?
Yes.
It should be "adopt."
That word, instead of introduce, is adopt. And then, we've already adopted a resolution adopting policies and procedures, so all of that, to the period, should be gone.
Should be omitted.
Should be omitted, yes. And then, the sequel language is the same.
Okay, so the statement, the last statement related to this item is exempt, is...
Is fine.
Yeah. Okay, so, after the semicolon, after districts, changing, introduce to adopt, omitting after the next semicolon, and adopt a resolution adopting policies and procedures.
Right, because it's already been done. It was done at the first reading.
Got it. Okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
May I now have a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the changes to item 14 as stated by the town attorney.
I'll second that.
Motion Kohler, second, Ackerman. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cuttrano.
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
All ayes.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm getting confused on this agenda. We had a closed session at 5:15 earlier this evening, and there are no findings or nothing to report from that. And Councilmember Goddard, would you mind reading the land acknowledgement, please?
I would be happy to. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging.
Thank you. Moving on to meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meeting. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off cell phones or place them in silent mode. The council will review the agenda at 10:00 p.m. to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 p.m. will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Remind myself and my colleagues that we have a very full agenda, and let's just be mindful of our comments and try to stay on track. My personal goal is to get us out of here by midnight.
Or sooner.
Let's, yeah, exceed the hope, okay. So we have a couple of presentations this evening, which are really wonderful part of this role. Our first is a proclamation of gratitude to Joan Bostian for her contributions to the community through the Women's Fitness Center. So I will read that aloud. "Town of Fairfax proclamation for Joan Bostian of the Women's Fitness Center. Whereas with a degree in psychology at the age of 22, Joan Bostian opened the Women's Fitness Center in Fairfax in 1985, where it has thrived for almost four decades. And whereas sadly, despite Joan's dedication and tireless efforts, the challenges of COVID in the past two years have forced the closing of the gym. And whereas Joan was inspired to help others by saying, quote, 'Being a part of the fitness industry would mean I could help make a difference for people both physically and psychologically,'" quote. And whereas Joan created a safe place for women at the Women's Fitness Center, and whereas the gym helped generations of Fairfax women become stronger in their bodies and minds, building confidence, vitality, and pride in accomplishing significant goals. And whereas many friendships grew in the gym in a positive atmosphere of inclusiveness, support, and validation. And whereas over 37 years of the Women's Fitness Center, Joan built a community within the town of Fairfax. And whereas hundreds of members admire and are grateful for Joan's dedication and perseverance in the face of many challenges over the years. And whereas Joan's tireless efforts will not be forgotten. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that the Fairfax Town Council extends its appreciation and gratitude to Joan Bostian for her dedication and many contributions to make Fairfax a healthier and stronger community. And be it further proclaimed that Fairfax is a better place because of you, Joan, and the Women's Fitness Center." Thank you so much. I'm going to sign this, and you can come up and get it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So sweet.
Thank you.
Very well deserved. Okay. Next is a proclamation in honor of Hamid Shamsapour, who has been serving as our interim Public Works Director. "Town of Fairfax proclamation for Hamid Shamsapour, interim Public Works Director. Whereas Hamid Shamsapour has ably served as the interim Public Works Director for the town of Fairfax since March 2022. Whereas Hamid has more than 27 years of professional engineering experience, including serving as the Director of Public Works for 13 years in Larkspur, where he formally retired in 2013. And whereas Hamid has a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from California State University Fresno and a professional engineer's license from the state of California. And whereas upon his arrival in Fairfax, began working on projects such as the pavilion seismic retrofit. And whereas in his first month, Hamid was confronted with the emergency at 195 Pine Drive. And whereas Hamid quickly found FEMA-approved projects and reinstated FEMA payments to the town. And whereas in his short tenure in Fairfax, Hamid applied for and won $177,000 in state parks per capita grants. And whereas Hamid documented many capital improvement projects, including six bridges to be paid by Caltrans, and prepared important budget documents to allow them to move forward. And whereas in his short four months here, Hamid ably managed a second emergency, a sinkhole near 78 Redden. And whereas despite his short tenure, Hamid has demonstrated his commitment to and support for the Town of Fairfax Department of Public Works and its projects. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that in acknowledgment of his many contributions during his short tenure in Fairfax, the Town of Fairfax wishes Hamid Shamsapour success in his future endeavors. And be it further proclaimed that the Department of Public Works is in a much better position to move forward due to Hamid's dedication, hard work. Ergo, the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax is deeply grateful and indebted to Mr. Hamid Shamsapour, P.E., and sincerely thanks him for his service to our lovely town." Thank you so much. Such a pleasure working with you, Hamid. Okay. Oh! Oh, we can have that reprinted. 18 years in Larkspur. Okay, moving on. Open time for public expression. This is the time to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Individuals are limited to three minutes, subject to the mayor's discretion. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of a council to discuss any un-agendized items unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action. If there are still raised hands after 30 minutes, open time will be continued to the end of the agenda. Moving on to consent, the council may approve the...
We're supposed to do open time?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to be really efficient here. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak?
Hello, council. I'll take my five minutes, speaking on different groups, as you'll hear from the subjects. First one, I'd like to remind everybody...
What groups are you representing? I'm sorry?
Excuse me?
What groups are you representing? I didn't hear that.
First, the group of people that have been ripped off by the Town of Fairfax, the UUT. Second, the group of my property, for my tenants. And third, from the properties of people on unceded land, the town wants to speak to the Mewocs, when in fact, there's hundreds of people that Fairfax actually took their properties in the '30s and '40s, because I have that list.
Thank you.
So if you please will not interrupt. So the first I'd like to address is I hope the general public will pay attention to the UUT, which is a .04 tax on your utilities, that the town is supposed to cap at $360 and contact PEGNE when paid in advance, or upon 15 days' review to get your money back. Last year, the Town of Fairfax budgeted $375,000 and collected $385,000 in the UUT. For myself, I actually paid this by a check in advance, so I will safely use the word theft when the intent is to take my money and not exempt the property, as PEGNE says other towns do. Second issue, I was more than disappointed to the last meeting when the town did not have the backbone to actually have a public meeting when it was discussing the town element. To think to have to do this on a Zoom-only meeting for any purpose was absolutely absurd since it's such an important project. As well as trying to take my property through inverse condemnation and downzone it, that would be an expensive proposition for the town, and at $68 million, I fear the town, by 2.5 budget upon that for 30 years, would actually cost the town, the citizens, by property tax between $120 and $150 million. Third, the town stays up here all the time and speaks to the unceded property taken from the Mewocs. The town might want to review their own records in the 1930s and '40s, when they took properties for as little as $2 for defaulted property tax. Those properties were then redirected and sold to different people that were benefiting from the relationships with the town. If the town would like to discuss any of these things further, I welcome that opportunity. And fourth, I do think it's very poor judgment that this town has moved so many things to the consent calendar. Today, we have 23 items. I think the town would be well-served to have these items addressed in the general public, so people have the opportunity to actually understand them and participate in them, and you might have a more welcome audience when we discuss this. If we could also have everybody pay... Excuse me, Madam Mayor. It is my time to speak, and we can please add a little decorum and at least pretend we're paying attention. This has been a problem ongoing. Thank you.
Any more members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, thank you. I will close.
Excuse me, there's a...
Oh, Zoom.
Yes. Are there any members of the public with their hands raised? Yes, there are two members of the public with their hands raised on Zoom. The first is Joseph Buenechol, and... You're unmuted now.
Hi, good evening. This is Joseph Buenechol, and the morning, or good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a Fairfax resident, and the mayor of Marin City, and I'm tonight speaking as the Fairfax representative on the Marine Commission on Aging, as well as the Chair of Age Friendly Fairfax. And I just want to provide a quick update for folks about a couple of events in July. Tomorrow is the June Marine Commission on Aging meeting, to which all are always invited. Tomorrow will be a business meeting, but that doesn't mean that it's not interesting. I encourage folks to come and hear what the Commission on Aging is doing to support those who are aging, which is all of us, in Marin. You can always find information about these meetings on the Age Friendly Fairfax page, which can be found on the Fairfax Town website. And then, I also tried to do my best to make sure that these events are also posted to Nextdoor, so if that's a source for you, you can find information there. Couple other events. There is going to be a wildfire safety and preparedness event on Friday, July 15. So, next Friday, I believe that is. And I encourage all of you, all of you in our community, those of you who are listening and those of you who are there in person, to come to the event, join your neighbors, town leaders, community partners, in learning more about preparing for wildfires. So the location, the event will be at the Redwood Stage in Perry Park. Will start at 4:00 and go till 5:30. And you're encouraged to bring your own chair. As you know, Perry Park has limited seating, but it's going to be a really great event. And then, lastly, another reminder for those interested in connecting with others, there's a breakfast with friends event that happens monthly on the third Wednesday. And this month's event will be Wednesday, July 20, and will be held at the Barefoot Cafe as usual. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Bell, and... Sorry. I'm not good at... There. You're unmuted now.
Thanks, Michelle. As you continue to read this land acknowledgement statement, I will continue to point out that the Mewocs wiped out the indigenous population of hominids who was living here previously. And so, they're living on, they lived on unceded land. And so, to continue the charade that you have for some touchy, warm, goofy feeling really is misplaced. Secondly, as Michael McIntosh mentioned, with 23 items on the consent calendar and where you are only giving three minutes to comment on the entire consent calendar, tonight that works out to less than six seconds per item if people wanted to comment on all of them. I've spoken with former council members of other towns who were shocked to hear this, especially in Fairfax, where we're supposed to be so progressive and democratic, where if you try to get something pulled off the consent calendar, of course, you're ignored unless someone wants to let it go by for, you know, like a little gift to the public. But there are four items on the consent calendar that I want to see pulled, which should give me up to 12 minutes to discuss them. That's not going to happen, because that's not how you work, because you violate the Brown Act virtually at every meeting, especially when you pack the consent calendar. I mean, we're also looking at other meetings from other committees that supposedly were under Brown Act violation, or Brown Act statutes, and those meetings were in violation of the Brown Act and were attended by the town attorney, who said nothing about these violations. So, it's pretty reprehensible for a supposed transparent, progressive town council to do this. And the other issue I wanted to bring up, as has been pointed out by many people, including myself, is for this whole housing thing that supposedly we need to put in 800 units, a state legislature can pass a law that doesn't make it legal, doesn't make it legal until it's been adjudicated. There were over 240 cities who contested SB 9, and I'm curious as to exactly how many the town attorney reached out to to form a collective to defray the expenses, legal expenses, and to contest this to the California Supreme Court. I have a feeling the answer is zero, just like my time.
Thank you. Any other hands?
Yes, the next speaker is Joe McGary, followed by Jody Timms. And Joe, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, council. Yeah, I'd just like to talk a little bit about engagement. And I came back from vacation and was looking to view the meetings of the Ross Valley School District trustees meeting, and I noticed while viewing them on their YouTube that they had a cool feature where each agenda item, kind of in the notes below the video, each agenda item was timestamped when it would come up, and it was actually linked, so you could hit, you know, say Agenda 3, you could, it said 14 minutes, you'd hit that link, and it would take you to that item in the agenda. And I just thought that that was a really cool feature. It might be something to incorporate to council meetings when you're watching them after the fact, and you go and you got a four-hour meeting, and you really want to see a certain item rather than the tedious task of trying to find it. If they had hyperlinks, I think that that would be, you know, might boost some engagement. And just along the lines of engagement, just want to talk about, real briefly, about the budget process, and specifically the workshop, and ask that maybe in the next year that there's some intention put to look at that process, and it's, having it held in the middle of the day, you know, in a full day, when the rest of the council meetings are all at evening, it lends itself to some issues around access, you know, particularly for the working class, that, you know, there would have to be lost wages to partake in that budget workshop. So it seems like it's accessible to, like, you know, wealthy or retired people who might have more leisure time, and so it kind of has some, you know, I want you to hear this with open hearts, like some classist elements to it. So maybe it could be explored to, you know, put that in some normal time slots that would be accessible to working-class folks. And then, the last piece was, I wasn't quite sure why the public hearing was moved from June 1st to the 16th, but I appreciated the initial posting to being on June 1st, kind of with the knowledge of, like, there's an exodus that takes place, or people, once summer vacation starts, you know, particularly using the school calendar, that that first week is a tough week to really get engagement, and I think it showed up. There were, I think I saw seven comments during the public hearing, so maybe in the future, that initial date, getting it before the schools get out, as you had it this year, June 1st, and really committing to making the public hearing, might also increase engagement. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jody Timms. And you're unmuted now, Jody.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's so nice to see you up there. I wish I was there in person, but it's just a delight to see you. And I basically just wanted to thank everyone in the town, yourselves and the community, for the really special Fairfax Parade and Eco Fest a couple weeks ago. It was great fun to be in the parade again after so long, well, it seems like so long. And then, to table, the Fairfax Climate Action Committee tabled alongside the San Anselmo Climate Action Committee, along with Age Friendly and a little bit of 350 Marin, we had an induction burner there and did a lot of education with folks about natural gas and moving away from greenhouse gas emissions. So it was just a really fun, as usual, community event, and so nice to have it happening again. So I just wanted to thank everyone in the community, all the amazing volunteers who put their, pulled their time together to create such a special and unique Fairfax experience. So thank you very much.
I see no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We'll close open time. Did you have an announcement? Is that what you wanted?
I just wanted to very quickly just announce something that is exciting. Actually, starting in this building, right over there, we now have a new hot water heater that is a heat pump and all-electric hot water heater, and that's one of five that are going into all of our town buildings. And so, that's good news, and I wanted to particularly thank, in addition to Hamid, the Public Works Director, but also thank our town manager, who has been passionate about this and found funding for it, so this is all being done not on the town's time. And one other person in particular, John Tierney, who's passionate also about this and has done a lot of the groundwork to get this in, so just wanted to announce that. Thanks.
Thank you. We should think about putting that in the newsletter. It's great. Thanks, Bruce. Anyone else have an announcement before we proceed to consent? Okay. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action. In the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any council member or staff member for separate discussion and vote. The opportunity for public comment on consent calendar items will occur prior to town council's vote on the consent calendar. So, before I open it up... Go ahead.
I don't want to pull any items, but I just want to mention, on the minutes, I provided some edits, changes, corrections to our town clerk, who, it's not important to note them here, but also on number 18, which is the letter to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center, we should carbon copy Heidi Tomsky, who is the executive director of the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. I think that was an oversight.
Since you're on 18, I was actually going to pull it.
Okay.
I have some suggestions for the letter and how to do that.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Any other...
Mayor, I do have a comment on item number eight, but I would like to wait till after public comment, if I may.
Nada? Okay. Then I will open public comment for the consent agenda.
Good evening, council. Rick Hamer, and this is about item 20, and I'm speaking as an individual. I'm observing these symptoms. Hiring four interim management personnel in rapid succession, those being town manager, director of public works, another director of public works, and a director of planning. Consultants for two headcount replacements, those being EMC, and yet another directing of public works. Extended consulting services from our attorney services, again, to partially offset a lack of headcount in planning and public works. Those seven doors we have opened for talent outside our town limits, sometimes as far away as Colorado, Arizona, or Washington. We did not reach out to a consultant in Sacramento last time we hired a planning director. Last December, I contacted the very consultant you were about to give more work to, with a resume and a cover letter for our Department of Public Works position. In my cover letter, I specifically highlighted experience with sinkholes. A week later, we had a sinkhole in Fairfax. I did not even get a call back. I found this odd. Their CEO used the words attended and college in the same sentence, just like me. It's one trait we both had in common with Frank Lloyd Wright. I guess Mr. Wright didn't, Mr. Wright didn't get hired either. So tonight, think of me as being akin to a HUD tester. Here's the tester's report. Some of the town of Fairfax choices for consultants are not delivering. Fiduciary oversight is absent or ineffectual, and the town is not shopping local. Here we are amending an agreement with an outside firm. It's been seven months now on an open agreement they already have, and results are a yet to deliver. Last month, San Anselmo posted a patch seeking members for their Housing Element Advisory Committee. It costs a buck a day to post on patch. The posting was, was up for a total of seven, a total of 20 days. They wound up having 10 very qualified candidates and filled four of four positions already. In Fairfax, we cannot fill our positions. What gives? Take your best shot at identifying the root causes as to why we are spending so much on entities who are, by their very nature, treating Fairfax like a job. In contrast, for towns person having an opportunity in any of these roles, community service is ingrained. We bankroll other folks so they can afford Sacramento, the Rockies, Puget Sound, et cetera. Each career you keep in Fairfax is another family you empower to continue to be able to afford living and thriving in Fairfax. The town itself is one of the too few employers in this town who pay a living wage. By dancing with these consultants, we are trading away our own livelihoods. We sure seem to have a runaway fixation on consultants. There's got to be some consultant living here in Fairfax who could counsel us and steer us on a path back home. Continue item 20 and others like it until you get the essence of home back in your sight. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, I can't see the timer. Is there a way that?
I realize that, and the cord is too short. I'll fix it.
I mean, I have my phone, but I prefer not to use it.
Okay. I'll, I'll give you a tea.
Okay. And if you could give the cue to the speakers as well, not just me, that'd be great.
Thank you, Michelle. I think the last speaker brought up some very valid points I hope the council would look at, because we have overlooked our own wonderful resources in our town that would support our town and stick around for our town and not just look at as stepping stone to take money away from our town. That said, for the ordinance that you're also going to be reviewing tonight, again, on a consent calendar for your gas powered equipment, I'd like you to really consider about the reduction of fire load that you're taking away from the general public, as well as overloading our already antiquated electrical service that provides this community. So if there's the really belief that we're going to have enough batteries to do all these things, I don't think that's correct. The town might be better advised to approach this incrementally like San Anselmo and start with the leaf blowers, so you can get rid of the noise ordinance as well as the combustion for that. But I encourage you for larger things such as chainsaws, pole saws, ride on mowers, that we do look at other options, because that will exceed the opportunity to reduce our fire load. But last but not least, I'd like to remind you of last month, when I specifically asked for a couple of items to be pulled off the consent calendar. California law is very clear that it states that the public has the right to know how the government is spending their money and when they're spending their money. And upon requests or certain things such as closed session and things on consent, that shall be pulled off so there can be discussion by the general public. So when the mayor overlooks those requests, which I very specifically made, that's a failure of operating and doing your duty. So I hope for the rest of the community that has interest in these consent items, that you'll better respect the law as well as your own respect and bring these forth. Thank you.
There are a few Zoom hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
And the first speaker on Zoom is Frank Egger, followed by Mark Bell. And Frank, you are unmuted now.
Thank, thank you, Michelle. Rick Egger, Metaway. I'm speaking on two items. I printed this agenda this evening, but it's obviously different than the agenda that you're working off of. So I'll just state what the issues are. One is, is the short term rentals. And it's the second reading in the adoption of the ordinance that will enforce short term rentals in Fairfax. The proposed short term rental ordinance exempt all RM zones, apartments and duplexes in RM multiple zones. A number of apartments have been converted already to short term rentals. Do not exclude them from enforcement. Has the town of Fairfax actually estimated how many affordable housing units we will be losing to short term rentals? Thank God, I appreciate the answer on that. That's, that's the speaking on one item. The other item was the, the, the letter in support of the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. Is that going to be pulled or should I speak to it now?
We pulled it.
Okay, so I'll speak to it when it comes up. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Bell, followed by Larry Bragman. And Mark, you're unmuted now.
Michelle, this Ling Shen wants to speak. I also want to speak. I can go back in queue. She wants to speak right now. However you want to do it, it's fine.
You can speak one after the other. I'll just set the, reset the timer for the second.
Okay, so Ling Shen Dominga. And I wanted to echo what, I want to say Mad Dog, but he has, what's his other name?
Rick.
Rick was, was saying about, you know, keeping some employment in Fairfax, that, that was very good points that he made and that are so true, that if you would consider hiring local people, that would be great. And another thing is about the Town and Country Club, that if you would please consider the possibility of restoring the, this to, to a hotel and for, for people, it would be so great, because it would create a lot of employment for the town of Fairfax and would be really super cool. So would you please consider and encourage that possibility? That would be a very good possibility, a very good scenario for Fairfax, for both the life of Fairfax and providing employment and restoring that beautiful spot for what it was originally, originally for. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, Mark?
Just a reminder to limit your comments to items that are on consent, please. Thank you.
Oh, no, I thought that was agenda.
It was. Okay, so first that I want to speak about is number six, which of course you won't pull. Receiver, written report on council members' assignments, committees, and activities in June by the administrative analyst Lorena Barrera, who we're sharing with Corde Madera and paying at the equivalent of over $100,000 a year. You know, you could have hired some high school students at a living wage to put those reports together. I mean, why are we paying somebody 50 something dollars an hour for just simple clerical duties? It's beyond me. Number 13, adopt the resolution extending the current terms for temporary outdoor use permits. I'm assuming that's for the park lets until December 15th. So like, what are you waiting for? Are you waiting for some children to get killed over by Village Saki because they can't see oncoming traffic? I mean, I don't understand why this keeps dragging on and on and on. I know there were people in the council who wanted this extended until March. The way we're going, we're going to see it extended into March 2023. And also, you know, the restaurants are doing quite well, and they're using town space rent free. And I think at this point in the COVID cycles, I think we need to end that part sooner than what's happening. I think you need to pull 16 as well as having more discussion on 13. 16, you're approving the budget on the consent calendar? You had some discussion last time. There was like some people who brought up points and said, now you put it on the consent calendar so you don't have to discuss it? I mean, we're looking at 100% increase in the town attorney salary, regardless of her justification for it, or whatever you want to call it. This is like an attorney who sat through numerous Brown Act violations. Oh, wait, we're hiring another consultant who's going to deal with the Brown Act enforcement? Isn't that like the, supposed to be the first job of a city attorney is to make sure that the Brown Act is followed? Yet you want to give an extra $200,000 to this person whose specialty really is billable hours? I don't get it. And that needs to be pulled, as well as number 21.
You have 10 seconds left, just saying.
Thank you. As well as 21, you see, I don't get my 12 minutes to talk about this. Oh, we, 175,000 isn't enough for a, a, a planning director, 185,000? So we're going to add 10,000 a year to start these guys out? How about the people who are working for the town now in public works? Are we giving them a $10,000 a year raise each, which they deserve? Oh, no, because we have to keep hiring consultants and we have to keep going out of town and we have to keep not trying to look at other ways to save money. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. And the next speaker is Larry Bragman, and you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. I wanted to give the council an update on the water testing that was done at the children's center and actually thought I was still in open time. I didn't realize the meeting started at 6:30 and the letter from the mayor had been pulled from consent. So I, I will withhold my report until it comes back to the council later in the meeting.
Thank you, Larry. I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Closing the public comment on the consent. So I think 18 was, or you had a comment on one?
Yeah, yeah, I did have a.
Go ahead.
Did anyone else have something else?
I just wanted to thank our town manager and our finance director, Michael Vavret, for the work on the budget and the revisions that were made from the last meeting, because there were a lot of good comments. And when I looked through it, a lot of those were incorporated. And yeah, just really appreciate, it's quite a tall order to just get dropped into the middle of Fairfax operations and to keep things moving along smoothly. So thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that, Vice Mayor. And I just wanted to share with the public, this is actually our fourth public forum reviewing the draft budget. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Jack Judkins for his 12 years serving on the Fairfax, Fairfax Open Space Committee and being willing to continue to serve. He's been a valuable member. And I also want to thank our town manager for all her work to find folks, to help us out as interim public works director through a consulting firm as well. We have been unsuccessful. And also thank you for finding an interim planning director who has incredible credentials. Also, our recruiter who helped us find you, Heather Abrams. So there has been a lot of delivery, and I think some folks who made comments may not be aware that this is a really difficult time to find folks with the right kind of credentials. We've been very fortunate with Jonathan Goldman and now Hamid Shamsapour helping us with public works. And there's a lot of public works projects. So I want to thank you, Heather, for your short time here, working on the budget, dealing with my many, many comments over and over, and, you know, just finding folks to help us out while we continue our recruitment. So thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, I would like to make a couple of comments on number eight, which is to adopt a resolution calling for the general municipal election, which will be held in November of 2022. I wanted to announce publicly that I will not be seeking reelection to the town council, and I say that with some emotion, absolutely. It's been quite a privilege and an adventure to serve this community. I will talk more about this as I'm, as I'm cycling out. I still have a good five months to cause a lot of trouble, but I really bring it up because I, this is a role that I really believe in. I think I said this in our first, my first and Barbara's first housing element experience here in Fairfax, when I was up here learning at the, at a learning curve of great steepness, that everyone should be able to do this job. Anyone with passion, commitment, hard work, love for their community, and some kind of tinge of leadership ability should be able to sit in this seat. I wanted to give enough ample time for the community to know that my seat will be open so that the, every person can choose to run for election, should you choose. This is an awesome opportunity with an awesome council to make a big difference in a world that needs some major difference making. So I wanted to announce that and thank you for everything and talk more about this later.
I, I think there's going to be opportu, I, we, I think we all have some things to share and the public, absolutely, but we have a very long agenda and I'd rather us just like stick to that, if you don't mind. Thank you.
We'll have a whole meeting to say goodbye to me.
We'll have multiple opportunities to celebrate, Renee. Thank you. Anything else before we? I, I'm going to recommend that we just move number 18 just before 23 on the regular agenda, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve consent and move 18 in front of 23, item 23.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion, Cutrano, second. Ackerman. Michelle, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes, thank you. We have one item on, that was a public hearing that has been continued.
Would you like a motion to approve the consent calendar? I think we lost power. Because they have a battery.
Are you, is the Zoom on still?
At the moment, the Zoom is frozen. But it's online because I have a battery on, on my, so we're just, it's reconnecting because I believe our Wi-Fi is.
A 10 minute break?
Yeah.
And then we gave it another certain amount of time to see if it would come back on.
Okay, but let's take a break.
Yeah. Yeah.
Pass the consent calendar and the item 18?
Yes, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.